Um, I'd like to welcome everyone to the Simsbury Board of Could you please stop talking?
Okay.
No, okay. Um, Simsbury Board of Selectment meeting for March tenth, twenty twenty five. It's a regular meeting and if we can all stand under the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. So I'd like to, I have a couple of names here for public audience. Steven, no. Joan Coe is the first one. Uh, you have five minutes and I'm gonna set my timer.
Can you wait till I get there?
Yep, Steven set his timer. We always wait till you get there. Okay, start.
The residents, uh, Joan Coe, twenty six, we can try. The residents of Simsbury are being manipulated by elected officials to believe that they are transparent and all information is discussed at meetings or posted on the town website. During the discussion on the approval of candidates for the selection of members of the Charter Revision Commission, discussion was absent, but the votes for the selected candidates were read by First Selectmen when they next to us and the vote was taken. The Board of Selectment process was not transparent, but discussed in a Democratic Party caucus, including the independent candidates to come to the meeting with a list of preferred candidates and a vote. Once again, there was little or no discussion at a Board of Selectment meeting in discussion on the town's budget, with all expenditures that was before them and the taxpayers did not hear any discussion on the reasoning for each Board member's input into their vote for approval. The budget actions were discussed at the Democratic Party caucus to control the discussion, leaving the residents with less transparency by the Board of Selectmen. With all discussions and approvals predetermined by the Democratic Party members of the Board of Selectmen, it does not serve the residents and the taxpayers with transparency. Prior to every meeting, I would suggest that as part of the introduction to the meeting, after the notice of five minutes for public audience, First Selectmen, when they next to us should state which agenda items were discussed in a caucus prior to the meeting. The Board of Selectmen were voted to serve the public, not process their priorities in secret, under the guise of a caucus. Developing the policies of the town should be an open session. As of now, the town has a shadow government that sets priorities behind closed doors. When decisions are made in secret, the public hearings are just window dressing as a mirage to open government. This should not continue. It was very alarming to hear that the Charter Revision Commission meeting on October fifth, twenty twenty five, that Town Manager Mark Nelson provided a letter with his priorities for potential changes to the charter with the Simsbury Public Arts Commission. I posted the letter on Twitter at Joan Coe. Town Manager Mark Nelson is trying to promote his agenda for economic growth by setting policies that should be discussed by the Board of Selectmen. Town Manager Mark Nelson is the Chief Executive Officer of the town. The Board of Selectmen sets the policies that the town manager should execute. Town Manager Mark Nelson has usurped the powers of the Board of Selectmen. Mark Nelson should follow the rule of law. The letter discussed repurposing Eno Hall for the purpose of the public arts commission. This change in use would appears to be inconsistent with the Antonat Eno Wood's will. It appears that Deputy Selectman, Deputy Selectman Steve Antonio has recently placed his signs on storage units, property that are in violation of the zoning regulations. Steve Antonio came before the Design Review Commission and the Zoning Commission with a rendering of a sign that was approved. However, there was signage that was in violation of the approval with banners and signs on the property. As a businessman, property owner, Deputy First Selectman, he should know the rules and should perform in his leadership position to play by the rules. The illegal signs have been removed. It appears that USA Waste and Recycling has purchased Payne's Rubbish Removal. The town has had a contract with Payne for waste removal with all rubbish removal and management of the transfer station on Woolcut Road. The transfer station is on the property of the Eno Trust for the poor of Simsbury. The town will be developing an RFP for rubbish removal services used of the transfer station. The company that is chosen should have a mandate to provide money to social services to be used for the poor of Simsbury. Over the years, the town has initiated studies to determine the need for continuing funding the Memorial Field Pool. All the studies determined that Memorial Pool should be closed due to the continued cost of maintenance and staff. The people using the pool will be able to use Simsbury Farmers Pool using tax dollars effectively. The comfort dog and the police handler is another expenditure that should be eliminated. The police car dedicated to the dog can be returned to the fleet for patrol and the officer can return to patrol duty, eliminating some overtime staff. All programs should be evaluated for cost benefit analysis to determine the need of the funding and all my comments we posted on. Simsbury at Patch and Twitter at Joan Coe. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Well done.
Very good. So I'd like to make a proposal for the consent agenda.
Was there another somebody else?
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, Lee.
No problem.
I got ahead of myself.
It's okay.
And I'm leaving your name right here.
That's all right.
Thanks, you guys.
Well, thank you. I'm Lee Appleby. I'm a resident of fifteen Firetown Road. Um, and I'm just here to speak in strong support of the Firetown Road sidewalk expansion project. Um, you have an action item on your agenda today. I do so for three specific reasons. First, um, is building the livable, walkable community I think and hope we'd all like to live in. When we moved to Simsbury about seven years ago now, we were so excited to live in very close proximity to the center of town. We quickly found out that proximity doesn't necessarily mean walkability, right? We often end up walking in the middle of the road in order to get to town. Um, and that's become particularly worsened since having kids who are still reliant on strollers. So adding a sidewalk there would make a big difference. I'd also note that we're not alone in this. If you simply step outside on Firetown Road any day, especially a nice day like today, uh, you can't help but notice walkers or joggers running by. It's very heavily trafficked by pedestrians. So, um, I'd also note that, um, in addition to connecting lower Firetown Road to the center of town, it has the great benefit of connecting our neighborhood to the Henry James School, um, opening walking opportunities potentially for students or educators. I hope someday in not too distant future that my kids will have the opportunity to do that. That brings me to my second point, which is safety. As I noted, it's a heavily trafficked road. And, you know, I don't wanna be the dark person tonight, but Connecticut has a traffic safety problem, particularly with pedestrians. We had more than sixty traffic fatalities last year with people walking alone. Now, this project doesn't fix that. But what it does is makes a big difference uh, in a part of town that we know can be a problem area. And, and my third reason for support is really about how we treat people who work in town. A lot of the folks who, who walk on Firetown Road are people who work at the managed care facilities up the road. And they often do so early in the morning or late at night, times of day where it's, where it's dark out, where accidents are much more likely to happen. So giving them the opportunity to walk safely to work, I think is the right thing to do. Um, and I think it's the right thing to do by their employers who deserve to know that their employees will be able to travel safely to work. So those are my three reasons. I hope you'll support this good agenda item that ought to pass tonight. I just do wanna say thank you to the, um, to the Public Works folks who've been great throughout this process. They've been super communicative. They've been super responsive, um, and I very much appreciate them. They speak very well for the town. So I wanna say thank you to them. I wanna say thank you to all of you for listening and good agenda item out of pass. Thanks.
Thanks. Is there anyone else here for public audience? Yes. Okay, I will move on. I'd like to, um, ask for a motion to move Selectment Action Item A and Select and Appointments and Resignations Items A and B to the Consent Agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion on those? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'd also like to ask for a motion, um, to amend the agenda to add Item G, um, to discuss the Charter Commission Letter from Town Manager Mark Nelson. I need to have, um, uh, do you wanna make the motion? Are you making the motion?
Can I say so moved or do you wanna make motion?
Oh, you could say so moved, I guess.
So moved.
Is there a second? Yeah. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's six of us. So that, that's Item G. Okay. And then we get into the First Selectmen's report and my report is that there is no reports. Um, working on the budget message for tomorrow night and the budget presentation. And I plan to send out, um, my budget message as my First Selectmen's report when I finish writing it. How's that?
Excellent message.
Thank you. On that, I'd like to turn it over to the Town Manager for his report.
Thanks very much, Chair. Uh, before I get into a, a few, um, items of interest to the public, just wanna thank this board for its work on the, uh, on the budget. Obviously, as the public's aware, the budget now rests with the Board of Selectmen and you'll be presenting it to the Board of Finance tomorrow in advance of a public hearing. So just wanted to thank this board and also thank, uh, all of our department heads and division heads and really a wide number of people who helped us on the administrative side this year. Made some very challenging cuts. I think, uh, on, on my side of the aisle, we, we cut over three hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the budget on the operating side. And we also were able to keep the capital proposal under the guidance from the Board of Finance. And we held CNR flat before we sent it on to the Board of Selectmen, where you were successful in further trimming it by, I think, about a hundred and fifty thousand. I, I don't have the final numbers right in front of me and obviously nothing's final till it's final. But I think that that puts us in a very good position relative to our peers and our surrounding communities as we've all worked very hard to mitigate the, the, the potential tax increase. So thank you very much. Please join me in welcoming John Butler to our PD. A former Hartford Police Officer has a start date today. So, uh, we're really good to, happy to welcome him. And I was meeting with the chief earlier today and we're, I think, just one short of being fully staffed, which is really, um, an outstanding result. As, as you all know, on this board, um, there have been some vacancies for, for a time. Uh, from Social Services, on February thirteenth, we celebrated the grand opening of the new food pantry location at Simsbury First Church with a ribbon cutting ceremony. Several of you were there. I wanna thank you for your participation. Very well received. And I wanna thank Kristen and the entire staff at Social Services for making that transition. And also throw a thank you out to TPW for their work in, in making the move actually help work well. Our elderly outreach worker Anne Marie Grella, excuse me, has become a certified matter of balance instructor and she's just completed co-leading her first course, where thirteen residents participated, learned about, uh, improving balance and muscle strength and so forth, so, uh, so forth, as well as what to do in the case of a, a fall. And Social Services continues to hold events for both seniors and youth. A line dancing class was held with forty-four participants and members of the Police Department joined in, including Clifton. So, uh, for those asking about Clifton today, he was in the line dance, in case anybody wants to know that. Uh, on March twelfth, we'll be hosting an intergenerational dance class, free and no experience is necessary, but don't look for me to attend that one. I think that's about it. Just wanna thank, or actually let folks know, mark your calendars for the annual Touch a Truck and Public Works Campus Open House. Some of you probably already know this, scheduled for May tenth. Hope to see you there. Uh, and also our very own Tom Roy is gonna be a presenter next week at the American with Disabilities Act Training Session with the Yukon Engineering Connecticut Transportation Institute. All of this will be posted online on the TM Report tomorrow. And that's it, Chair. Thanks so much.
Thank you. So I'm gonna ask for Selectmen Liaison Reports and anything else I'd like to say. So I'll start with Curtis.
So right before this meeting, the Police Commission, they started the process of the records room renovation that we authorized last year. They started the process of digitizing records, which we authorized last year as well. They voted to adopt the law to have everyone wear a seatbelt if you're in a police car. I guess because of the accident that happened. They took the state law and are applying it now to the, uh, town of Simsbury. Their move, our next one's meeting is being moved to the twenty first due to the school's spring break. They started their four-year review. So someone comes in to audit police, um, for every four years. And then the Police Academy started last week. I was lucky enough that I was, I was able to attend it. So we had eight more weeks of Police Academy training.
And that's two and a half hours every Wednesday night?
It was actually almost four hours.
Yeah. It does go long.
Yeah, it's, it's a, it's a great, great opportunity. Um, I didn't have a chance to go to zoning 'cause we had a budget meeting, but, um, so that's all.
Thanks, thanks, Curtis. How about you, Heather?
Um, I do not have anything today.
Okay. I don't have anything. We do a personnel on Thursday and, um, the agenda just came out. It'll be posted probably tomorrow, so.
I have nothing. My, my meetings have not met since our last meeting.
On Board of Ed, uh, their February twenty-fifth meeting was canceled, but on the previous meeting, they did their, uh, budget vote, which will be presented to the Board of Finance if it has not already, when we, we know that they approved their budget. Additionally, uh, they accepted a twelve thousand five hundred dollar, uh, gift from, um, Ensign Bigford for the K through twelve STEM program. And art teacher Tara Harrison from Central School was named the Connecticut Art Association Teacher of the Year. And she was, uh, celebrated at that meeting and we thank her for her service and congratulate her. For Culture Parks in Rack, um, they were putting together their twenty twenty-five summer events calendar and they gave a progress report on the golf course path and drainage work that is being done. For SIMPAC, they are exploring better and free accessible parking options and are hoping to have solutions, uh, in the next couple of weeks available for this summer. And they have identified a new executive director. However, that is not public yet. They're hoping an announcement will come soon. It's not public because they are under contract at their current situation. So, but that is good for them. Aging and Disability Commission, I'm going to hand out, and we can include this in minutes if you choose. Here is a calendar of events for, um, Aging and Disability Commission for the Year and this will be updated and should be on the Aging and Disability, um, portion of the town website. And that is it.
Okeydoke. Oh, I got a question.
Yes.
Um, are, are we still targeting, um, for November for the shovel-ready start of the PAC, given all, if we get all the funding?
That...
Unless you know something, I, I don't know, Diana, but I thought so.
Yes, that is still the target goal. Actually, um, potentially the end of October. Once they get past the last event. And even if they could start it right before that event and, uh, it wouldn't impact that, that October event that they are planning on.
The big one.
That is still on target and the funding is, is pretty much complete.
Okay, good. All right, sorry, Kevin.
No, let's be, uh, just quickly from sustainability. Thanks to, um, uh, staff support in the library for the launch of the Power Smart Campaign, which is, um, uh, gives information to town residents who are interested in, um, adding solar, uh, ore and battery storage, um, uh, for their households. There are some incentives available to them. The event was recorded and so you can watch that on, uh, on the recorded, you know, segment on Simsbury TV and there's more information on the town's, um, website. So this is a no cost to the taxpayer opportunity here, but it's, uh, available for residents to take advantage of, um, if they would like to. So that's all from me.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so I'm gonna move into Selectment Action. Uh, the first item that we have is to schedule a public hearing for, um, proposed amendments to the Town Code, Chapter Seventy, for the building construction. So I'll, I'll give the, a little background. Mark introduced this as a proposal for the budget to increase the building permit fees by one dollar, because we are fairly well under the current building fees in the surrounding areas and as a way to generate additional revenue. Also that the fees have not been increased since two thousand and eight. So that was a great proposal. It came to the Board of Selectmen in the Town Manager's budget and the Board of Selectmen would like to add an additional dollar to that, um, building permit fee because that still seems to keep us within a realm to, to increase the permit fees. I have George here. I, I, we did ask to include the scale and the list of fees and, you know, George had made a, um, provided information to Town, to the Town Manager's office, on the, um, surrounding towns. So I don't know if any, we did discuss this kind of at length at our budget meeting, but if anybody has questions for George, for Mark? Mark, if you'd like to add anything to this?
Just that at your request, Chair, we did add George's analysis to the public packet. That was the original memo that came to, to us when we did, uh, to, to, to prepare the budget. So that's now, uh, online for public access as well. But we, we've done the fiscal analysis and, and, uh, I've come to the same conclusion you have, that, that two dollars is not unreasonable.
Okay, and, um, you know, so we're, we're including this in our budget assumptions and if for some reason it doesn't pass at the public, will we vote on it? We'll, we'll roll it back. Um, so, if there's any questions here, I'm gonna ask for a motion effective March tenth, twenty twenty-five, to set a public hearing to receive public comment on the proposed increase to the building permit fee for six P M. on Monday, March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just on the role, sorry, go ahead, Curtis.
Oh, no, I was gonna, uh, what's, what's the timeline for this? Just, I had someone ask me, because they have a project they're working on and they wanna get their permits before we...
So we, we anticipated that question, but I think after hearing from public comment, the board would have discretion. Typically, uh, this would be enacted twenty-some days later, unless you specify. In, in our budget proposal, we were anticipating it becoming effective July one.
July first, right.
And so I would recommend July first.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, right? Because that's the one the, the budget would start. Okay, so that was the discussion.
My, my only question was you mentioned about rolling it back and I wasn't sure what you meant, in the budget or, um, not going through with the increase.
Yeah, if, if the, at the public hearing, something came to light and we didn't approve it, we would have to take it out of our assumptions.
Yep.
Right.
I think that we might not realize that revenue. I, I don't know exactly how we would modify that from the budgets approved. There's probably a separate process to, to roll that back. I don't think it's inappropriate to leave it in. It's a, it's an appropriate budgeted amount. I'm just saying that.
I guess we would, we would let the Board of Finance know and then they can do with it what they want. So that's, that's a good point. I didn't, I didn't know if we had to really roll it back.
I don't think so.
Okay, okay. So all those in favor of scheduling the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, public hearing scheduled. Um, the next item is, um, authorizing the Town Manager to execute various Firetown Road sidewalk easement agreements. Adam's here to talk about this, but those who are in the, well aware, this sidewalk along Firetown has been in the works for over two years, for a long time. And, um, I, I do have questions. So if you, do you wanna sit there? Do you wanna come up?
Come on.
Why not sit there?
So, so I, I'll defer if anybody else has questions for Adam or do you wanna give some? I don't know how you wanted to do this, Adam.
Let's hear Adam talk first.
Thank you for telling me to be quiet.
Lee took all of our good points for the why it's needed, so just cut that out. Just, just to recap, I mean, it's been a little while. So, um, the sidewalk project will stall almost a mile of sidewalk from West Street all the way up to Plank Hill Road, where we currently have the sidewalk that runs up to Henry James. It crosses, you know, probably about fifteen properties on its way there. Through the design process and the reason why we're here tonight, is, you know, we're at about ninety percent final design and that's where we have enough detail to determine whether we can avoid somebody's property and stay within the right of way or if we need to, uh, locate the sidewalk or in some cases, just grading, um, to even out the slope from the sidewalk down to their property. If we do need to impact properties. We've been in contact with property owners since January twenty twenty-three. It went straight through from concept to now. And, um, our appraisal process took much longer than we anticipated in the fall. And it was, wasn't until about December where we had the value of those easements, whether permanent or temporary, so that we could begin that conversation with each property owner that's affected. Total number of, of those properties, about nine properties where we have easements. Two of those nine are just temporary for construction. The other seven would be a permanent easement, just over their frontage. And that can vary from a few square feet where a property we couldn't miss, all the way up to a few thousand square feet where we're impacting a greater portion of property. But in either case, uh, you know, we've met with the vast majority. I think we have one, one other property owner meet with this week, uh, for the first time with the appraised value. But everything's been, been great so far and we're hoping to, to push this forward. Essentially, from a design, construction standpoint, we can't move forward until all the easements are in place. So once the easements are in place, uh, paid for, signed, all that good stuff, we can submit to the state with a hundred percent package and that will set up our timeline for bidding and going to construction. So happy to answer any questions. I have a question. So when, when Firetown, would you consider putting a stop sign? Because, you know, one way on Firetown is no stop sign and the other two have stop signs. So you're gonna cross over where someone, I guess, put up reflective lights to cross the road there? So right at Grape Pond, that intersection? Yeah, so we, um, we've worked with the, the PD to look at that intersection in light of a crosswalk, in light of the sidewalk. Uh, it's a clear change in operation of that intersection. We also heard from a few residents with the same concerns about that. That there's not a stop control traveling north on Firetown. So, uh, they analyzed the new situation. We talked about an LTA meeting and, uh, will likely install, um, a new stop sign to stop our following the, this project. So it wouldn't occur, occur until this project is all set.
Just a clarification, because I see, um, the financial impact. So the grant will basically reimburse for whatever financial impact we have for this?
Correct. So in September, we, I think it was, actually it was, over the summer, we requested, um, that the lots of grant include right-of-way costs. And we received a pal and executed that in September to reimburse the costs associated with it. That would apply to all eligible costs under the grant. There are some times where they won't reimburse the entire amount, but hopefully they will.
I have a question. Um, so, so we've been talking about this project for quite a while and we had never heard about the easement piece of it. So I just was wondering if that's a relatively new requirement on that we have to kind of fund, uh, these easements for these properties?
So for this project, um, we originally went into it thinking we wouldn't necessarily need easements. And there, there's certainly a way forward where, um, let's say you place a sidewalk directly behind a curb and run it all the way up Firetown Road. Now, in that case, we normally would widen the sidewalk to about six feet for a comfort level. So it's a little bit wider because people will shy away from traffic. That also causes an issue with snow removal, because now all your plows are piling snow directly on the sidewalk. So our preferred method is to create like a three-foot snow shelf. And that allows most snow to pile there, so it's not as bad. We also looked at, I think in the concept, there was an idea like along the golf course that we would do a retaining wall or something like that, so we wouldn't impact them at all. And subsequent to some meetings with the country club and to discuss, you know, kind of how do we treat that frontage? It's a lot, it's a long ass action. And they were great partners in this, and we determined we could actually bring the sidewalk away from the road, bring it down a little bit, and just grade. So basically just fill. And that reduced the cost of the project by a good amount. They've been great partners to date. So, you know, once we really got into it and had a survey where you determined exactly where the right of way is, where your curb line is, that's when you can really figure out if easements are necessary. So it wasn't until around probably 35% design where we had the survey, we had actual locations for everything that we could make that determination. And then as we proceeded from 35% to 90%, is where you can really determine how much property you need. Now, should we know that these are just easements, they're not takes? So really, we're only establishing the town's right to construct and reconstruct that sidewalk if needed. It has no impact of, you know, frontage or, or anything of that sort.
Okay. Well, what a silly question. So since most of it is a long hot metal country club, I assume they're going to be shoveling the sidewalk every winter for the town?
Yes, yes, we have ordinance on the books that require the adjacent property owner and.
Yeah, that's a lot of shoveling.
It is.
Okay. Anybody else?
These property owners, as part of this process, they're aware that they're going to have to maintain the sidewalk.
Yeah, that was really the only gripe we've gotten on the whole project. And it's pretty consistent across the board, which we certainly understand. But yeah, they're, they're all aware. All of our meetings with them, we're sure to mention that, so it's on the same page.
You did do a really good job at the session you held. I don't remember when that was.
It was in July.
Yeah, and the residents were really hap, most of the residents I can, everybody was really happy with it because I was sold for that meeting. But it was, it was a good job that you guys did.
What's the timeline for this?
So we're, we're at the awkward period of time where if everything goes, goes right, let's say we get all the easements and everyone's paid and everything's signed by April 1st. We resubmit, let's say it takes a month or two for the reviews and any necessary adjustments that need to be made. And then we have to wait for CROG to okay our advertisement. So that could put us in a July, maybe, bid period. And that's not really the best time to bid a job in the middle of the construction season. It also sets us up in a situation where we could end up starting the job in, let's say, September. And I always get worried about disturbing a lot of earth and missing the growing season. And then we have bare earth extending through the winter. So we're going to end up having to make a decision sometime in a couple of months, depending on how this process plays out and reviews and whatnot, on whether we hold the bid documents till later in the fall and bid it towards the end of season for a spring start, or if we do try to roll the dice and bid it in the summer. It's always a rough time to, to proceed with a job like this. And there's a lot, there's some sections where there's going to be a lot of earth that needs to be seeded and grass grown. And I wouldn't want to do that in like October and miss the growing season.
Just one quick question. Lots of, this grant, I know it's, it comes, I think through CROG, you said, but nothing federal would impact this, correct?
No, no, it's all state money. It's a, it's a connectivity grant for $594,000, and then it's also the Lots of Grant for a little over a million, so.
Okay.
Got a lot of state money for this one.
Okay.
Is that, are those passed through though?
The state money?
Yeah.
Yeah, it passes through us.
No, are they passed through, through the state? Like, are they federal D O T funded or something?
No, that's the nice thing about the Lots of Grant program is only state funds. They separated that to make our lives a little easier.
Okay, good. Done. So I ask for a motion effective March 10th, 2025, to authorize Town Manager Mark Nelson to execute all documents related to easements associated with the Fire Town Road sidewalk project. Further move to allocate and authorize Lots of Grant funding for the easements associated with the Fire Town Road sidewalk project.
So move.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, thank you.
Should be calling up the F R S P. Sorry, just a little joke. Okay. The next item is about the motor vehicle depreciation. So we, the Board of Selectmen at the meeting, we asked to include this recent update from the state that allows for a higher depreciation schedule because of the motor vehicle changes to MSRP. So we decided at our meeting that we would incorporate that into our budget for this year. But because of that, it requires the local legislative body to approve that change to the, to the depreciation schedule, which I did ask to have included in the packet just so people were aware. And so that is part of the packet. And it now starts at 90% versus 85%. And it allows a little bit additional grantless projection, which was very good to have. So we thank everybody involved for coming up with the projections for our budget. And if anybody has any questions, otherwise I'll ask for a motion.
So during the budget period, I heard, I thought Amy mentioned that it could go away next year? Or is it, is it just for one year?
It's only for the first year, but we're adopting this schedule. I didn't hear that, but I don't know, I didn't read the whole legislative. But I don't think so. I think they just changed the schedule. Oh, Francine's here.
I didn't hear the question, I'm sorry.
It's not just one year, it's, it's continuing beyond one year?
Yes.
Yes. Depreciation schedule.
Pardon me?
We're altering the depreciation schedule.
Over multiple years, yes.
It's an extension.
Yeah, that's why.
Yeah, so the current depreciation, the way they passed it originally, starts at 85 and then depreciates over 20 years, okay? The local option that they passed through for towns would start at 90% instead of 85. So for the newer vehicles and then.
So I'm going to ask for a motion effective March 10th, 2025, to approve the adoption of the local option allowed under HB 7067, Section 2, to elect to apply a modified schedule of depreciation as outlined in HB 7067, subsection 7B, with respect to motor vehicles based upon the manufacturer's suggested retail price of such motor vehicles, provided no motor vehicles shall be assessed in an amount less than $500. So move.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Only that this references the House bills. I'm sure that it's fine. The language is probably the same, but it's law as opposed to referencing it as the House bill. But I think that we understand what we're talking about.
Yeah, and you, you guys looked into the wording.
Yeah, the wording came from.
Yeah.
Came from, so, thank you. Okay, so all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. The next item is just the Hometown Hero Program Guidelines. So both Heather and I are hometown heroes, and there were adjustments made last year to clarify some things. But as we got to that session, it wasn't as clear as we thought it was. So we clarified it again, and those clarifications are included in the attached and also in the form online. It's gone through the, the Hometown Heroes Commission, and it's before the Board of Selectmen right now. Anybody have questions? Otherwise, I'll just move along with the motion.
What's the groups part there? It's, it's been individuals before?
Um, that, that was added.
Have we ever recognized a group in the past?
Yeah, they've had groups. I think the Garden Club or something like that has been nominated, but this has been like, it's a formally kind of.
Yeah, allow that. It's like when Time Magazine Person of the Year was all of us.
Yes, true, yes, yeah. So I'll ask for a motion effective March 10th, 2025, to adopt the proposed Hometown Hero Guidelines as presented.
So move. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 And just for reference, Tom, when does this go out?
Put it out tomorrow.
Okay, get your hometown heroes. Start thinking about them.
Yeah, you don't know Wendy, sorry.
I know, thank. Well, what if I did something outside of the Boarding Commission that was worthy?
Not until you're not in office.
Oh, right, right.
And, and we're caught up with the plaques now, Chair.
I know, very good.
Sorry about the delay, we're caught up.
Can't be serving on a current Board of Commissioners.
And setting up the chairs too. No, no, not calling everybody else.
Okay. So what were you saying about the plaques, though?
One that had a typo.
Oh, that's missing, okay. She's trouble. Okay. Next item is the amending the MOU between the Town and Simsbury Volunteer Association. I'll let Mark, do you want to speak to this one, Mark?
Just briefly, Chair, you know, I, again, this was, this came out of the Town Manager's budget work. And we're still waiting final guides from the Town Attorney, who's gone through several layers to, to get a definitive answer. But one thing we're agreeing on is that the strengthening of the MOU, which this board unanimously passed some months ago, would be helpful. And that's what's before you tonight. The highlighted sections are new. We've discussed it with the SVAA's Executive Director. They're in agreement if the board is so inclined. And again, just for the public, really, it's strengthening language around their readiness and service for opioid-related incidents. And you'll see those two, two or three changes there. Happy to answer any questions.
It's my understanding they already have the Narcan stuff in there. We've already talked about it, they have it. So this doesn't seem to be a substantive change really at all, it's an administrative change.
Just to memorialize the requirement, and again, the backstory behind this is that it, it should improve the compliance with the use of opioid settlement funds to pay the required $180,000 in what will be year two of the three-year MOU.
So while nobody has explicitly said, yes, we can do this, nobody has hinted that we can't, is it right?
There hasn't been a scintilla of concern or worry. There's been a little bit of passing the buck, you know, I'm not authorized, I can't tell you.
I expect it, yeah.
Sounds good, call, call this number. And we're still working on that. But fundamentally, you know, we think, and the Town Attorney concurs, that we're going down the right path. That certainly, when this board acted to add the second response unit, you're providing that response to anyone that would be facing that set of circumstances. And therefore, we think it should be, and ultimately will be found to be an eligible expense. Just to clarify, it's not going to have a budget impact on the mill rate. At this juncture, we weren't able to get it definitive in time, but it, it would reduce the use of reserves, which obviously is important.
Right, because that was our other option, is kind of using CNR for this.
In a way, this worked out better because we didn't have to rush the answer. We don't have to take any unnecessary risks. And it's, you know, the, the SVA obligation is either funded from reserves or it's funded from opioid. And either way, it doesn't impact our, our budget. But it, but it, you know, we still are very hopeful because it would obviously increase reserves available for important capital expenses.
Okay. Okay, any, anything else? I'd like to ask for a motion effective March 10th, 2025, to approve the proposed amendment to the MOU for the Simsbury Volunteer Ambulance Association. So move.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that passes. So now we're moving to item G, which I asked to put on the agenda. Just a little background. This letter was sent to the Charter Revision Commission last week for their March 5th meeting. I was called by the Chair. She wasn't sure, you know, why it was sent to the Charter Revision Commission. Just her personally thinking that it was more of a policy decision, which I should come before the Board of Selectmen. I, I agreed with her on the phone. I had not seen the letter, so I was asked the letter from Franklin, who forwarded the letter to me. They subsequent, subsequently discussed it, which I did send the information, I didn't watch all of it, to the Charter Revision Discussion on the letter. And I felt it was worthy to bring to our board to talk about the contents of the letter and the appropriateness of it. And I'm just putting it out here to the board. I don't know, Mark, if you wanted to add anything, or if I would like to hear from people who had opinions on the letter. I don't want to be the first one to start, so I will open it up. Because I have my own opinions, but I'm going to open it to anybody who would like to speak to it.
I appreciate that. I'll take very briefly to, to circle around a couple of the issues that have been raised. So first of all, as I think everybody's aware, the Charter Revision Commission is an advisory body that recommends things to the Board of Select. So ultimately, whatever the Charter Revision Commission does or doesn't do, is coming back to the Board of Select. Working cross-sectionally through the organization, my office and I specifically brought this idea forward with Diana, talked to the Superintendent of Schools and others. And you see the signatories on the letter as self-evident. What the letter proposes is the establishment of, for lack of a better name, and this may change, or it may not happen at all. Again, it's just an idea. But for the purposes of the idea, it's described as the Simsbury Public Arts Commission. It does not seek, nor would it require, any funding. There is no appropriation requested or any ask of the Charter Revision Commission other than it consider creating the commission. And the way it's recommended in the letter is that the word "culture" would be peeled away from what currently exists, Culture, Parks and Rec. And it would become Parks and Rec, and there'd be a standalone commission called the Public Arts Commission. One of the really compelling things about the, there's a couple of compelling things about the concept first. One is that a member of the commission would be a student who would be appointed based on the recommendation of their school administrator. This would be a Simsbury student who was either majoring or had a, had a significant interest in participating in art. I was interested to hear that somebody was recognized. I forget, Tautara or one of the, yeah, one of the students was, was recognized. But somebody, somebody like that. And so the proposal is unique in that it would put a student on a, on a Boarding Commission. And, and so I, I and others who signed the letter thought that that was, that was an interesting thing. The, the concept, and again, not, not taking credit for this entirely, but the formation of this came from the goal, that the, one of the goals that the Board of Selectmen set for itself, which is economic development. And when this board set my goals, one of my goals is to implement all of your goals. And so my view on this, and reasonable minds may disagree, that this board set policy when it set its own goals and when it set my goals. And so the reason that I'm a proponent of this, and I can't speak for the others, I think you'll find, I, I learned today that the six of us were invited to the Charter Revision Commission to, to give a presentation and, and talk a little bit about this. And I think that, that each of the six of us may, may end up having slightly different reasons why we like the idea. So I don't want to speak for the other five. But for me, in my personal life and my experience, and my lived experience particularly, I am well aware of how the arts can be leveraged for the benefit of economic development in a, in a community this size. And, and so for me, it's about economic development. It's about engaging our youth in, in bolstering the arts. And then the last thing I'll say on this is, why get the Charter Revision Commission involved? This was a conversation that Wendy and I had. I want to be very clear that there are a number of ways to create a Boarding Commission. One is by charter. If it's created by charter, it can only be eliminated by charter. If it is one of the boards and commissions, say DEI, for example, or I don't know, maybe sustainability would be an example. Any subsequent board could do away with it. The longevity of the Public Arts Commission is important. Its sustainability over a number of years is important. And by creating it by charter, you're taking it out of the political arena. And, and the irony here is that the, 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 the claim is that this was a policy decision. The Charter Revision Commission, let's be clear, does not set policy. The Charter Revision Commission only recommends to this board. This board sets policy. There has not been any argument for me about that point at all. The only issue I respectfully ask you to consider is that, and this is my view, I don't speak for anyone else, but that your Town Manager ought to be able to make suggestions to the Charter Revision Commission for their consideration. That's all I was doing. I sought out others and, and others' opinions because I like to work collaboratively. And collaboration, in this case, included the school superintendent because of the idea that we get the student involved. If, if I may be so bold, it's probably one of the most collaborative things I've done since I've been your Town Manager. And in fact, I've been trying very hard to work more collaboratively with the school district on a number of initiatives, from Two Farms Village Road, which I was very involved in, to this initiative, which is superintendent's reason. So I appreciate the opportunity to take a minute to defend myself because I felt recently that the, the, the claim was this overstepped, the letter overstepped, for which I, if that's the case, my apologies, no overstep was intended. I, I long wanted to send the Charter Revision Commission some suggestions. This board actually said I could do that. I chose not to send that letter because I have to review that letter that you saw some months ago, seemed to be overly negative. And I do just want, if I can, the privilege of adding a comment about that. Many of the things that were in that letter predated me. It came from two other sources of documentation, including your interim Town Manager prior to me. Those weren't, you know, Mark Nelson's ideas in that letter. Some of them came from staff. What I was trying to do was put a letter together that encompassed everybody else's ideas just so that they would get, you know, I could say, yeah, your, your idea is being reviewed. So I just wanted to put that out there. But this letter, this letter that has my signature on it, is a very positive recommendation. It doesn't talk about anything negative at all, it's just a really good idea. Thank you, Chair.
Sure. I have a few points to make, but. I have a few points to make, but did you want to say something?
I'd like to hear from Diana.
Yeah, go ahead, Kevin.
Yeah, so since.
Oh, did, did you want to go?
No, I wanted to hear from Diana, if she wouldn't mind, just because her name is on it.
Yes, since my name is on the letter and I wanted to explain my part in or, or perspective in this, and actually address even a few things that Mark brought up. First, which I was not a part of, but understand when Mark was talking about having a student on board and meeting with the, with Matt. I do know that there are student liaisons, so I don't think it would, in the intent, and correct me if wrong, I took it as it would be a student liaison, not a, a, a voting member of the commission on this arts commission. But I know Board of Ed has student liaisons, Aging and Disability has had student liaisons over the years, and I think that was the intent, and not a full-fledged commission member. But just on that note. I, I also am very supportive of the arts, and I feel that we are a vibrant arts community, and understanding that looking at having an arts commission or a public arts commission, whatever we want to call it, does open, and I know this from experience, working with nonprofit arts, even as a commission from the town opens up the availability to bring grants into the town that are available directly through arts grants and private arts organizations and private funds specific for arts that could bring in grants to our town that we are not currently receiving. And I think that could help in the economic development area, bringing in these funds for arts programs into town. Otherwise, it's, you know, smaller grants can be given to individual arts programming, but if we have a commission or something centralized, it does open it up for very large grants from, whether it's the Office of the Arts, or the Hartford Foundation for Public Giving, or the Garminy Fund. So that was one of the perspectives that I, I brought. The culture part that I was looking at was, and this is where, where I thought, from the Charter Review perspective, since the Culture, Parks and Rec is a commission, I believe, in the Charter, and any change that would potentially be made to it would be maybe a recommendation from Charter, and I apologize if it should have been a policy from this board first, but to look at, is it possible to remove it? And I did have a conversation with Parks and Rec and, and, and the Chair, simply as a due diligence, where if they had no appetite for it, then I let it go and it's dead in the water. But knowing that, and as liaison to Cultures, Park and Rec, that the majority of the focus that they do is simply on the Parks and Rec side. And it's what they do, and it's what they do well. And the culture is often something they strive to, and I don't want to say it's an afterthought, but the little that they delve into that culture and arts piece doesn't even have a large portion of their budget. And most of the things that are budgeted are strictly for recreational and parks maintenance. And it was almost a relief for them to have it off of their purview and something that could be focused on by another entity, and it's not something that, that they would have to then work on, which is not an area of any, especially on their board currently, and maybe that should change, but it's not something that is part of any of their expertise and anything that they put a lot of energy into. So that is the position that I was looking at when, when this was discussed and thought it may be a good idea. And, you know, simply to see if it's something that Charter wanted to entertain, to bring back to us, to, to review. So again, apologize that if a, a procedure on my end was done in an order that it may not have, should have been, but that is where my perspective and, since my name is on this letter, I wanted to discuss where I was coming from. And I'm sure everybody has lots of questions, and it's fair.
Yeah, I'll start, because collaborative is a word being used. And, I'm sorry, someone's gonna call bullshit.
We're on TV, just call her on point of order.
Someone's gonna call bull. The fact that we haven't even heard of this, to be honest, when you spoke to the Charter Review Commission, you didn't even bring this up.
I didn't know it was going to be actually discussed by them that evening because.
You do great liaison reports, you've never heard of this. It's a great concept, but it's another bomb on our board. Here it is, decide quick, because we already did it. And honestly, it's a great concept, but it has to be digested. To give the town manager three employees, where did this come from? It didn't come from the Board of Selectmen. I don't feel we've weighed in. I think it's a great program, but there is a method. We all wrote our letter to the Charter Commission together. We had plenty of time, apparently this was being worked on behind the scenes during that time, and nobody brought it forward, and I'm just calling it out. I'm also the EDC liaison. To my knowledge, and I go to all the meetings and workshops, it's never been discussed, but I see the Chair's signature here.
I didn't discuss it then.
So it's not really fair to say you're signing on behalf of the Board of Selectmen. No offense, Diana, I respect you and I appreciate your efforts. Or the EDC Chair, who I also respect and appreciate their efforts. But if the board hasn't even heard of it, this is a total, I'm gonna shy away from profanity, but everybody fill in the blank. And I think it's something that we start to take control of the town back, and we progress on this, but in an organized and deliberate fashion, coming from the Board of Selectmen. You know, if it's gonna go to the Charter Commission, there's no reason it can't come through us to bring us into the loop. And by evasive, avoiding that, it seems evasive. And I obviously do have a lot to say about the composition of the board, the viability of the board. To be frank, the domino effects of the board being the senior center, Simsbury Community Media, there's so many ramifications, you know, we did a charrette, I'm almost done with my grandstanding.
That's good.
We did a charrette years ago and brought the whole town in because it was a vision for the whole town. Mark Nelson, who I think does a great job, has only been with us for less than a year and a half. I think we can add a lot of tenure to this discussion, and to not allow the townspeople to speak out on this before you propose it to the Charter Commission is sort of, I, I don't fully comprehend what has transpired here. And yes, we do accept the Charter Commission's proposals, but we don't want to let them go sixteen months down the road and bring everything to us and then start line item, you know, vetoing different things we don't like. It should be a cohesive project moving towards the goals we set for the Charter Commission, and they've already got their hands full. Again, to circle back, great program, I actually support the program ironically, but the method of approach has to be adjusted to include the proper boards, of which I think we are the head and the general public. Okay.
Okay.
I will say that my part, though, just to address this one issue, when I spoke was, was after we discussed Charter Review, so it's, it's like, why didn't I bring it up then?
The letter was there. I don't want to get into a tit for tat.
Yeah. Did anybody else have comments?
Wendy, just a, just a.
Yeah. I have comments.
A quick point of response to this. So in, in all things, Selectman Antonio was correct. The only thing I would add for your consideration is that the, this is rather unique because it's the Charter Revision Commission, and I, I try to listen very carefully. I don't, I don't think I, I want to hear or should hear that the, that, that this board acts as a funnel of things that the Charter Revision Commission can undertake. In other words, under state statute, your board gives them guidance, which you did. This concept came after that. But I think Selectman Antonio's perspective may be a little misguided in that everything that the Charter Revision Commission must consider or will consider needs to come through this board. My point is, is that any member of the public can write to the Charter Revision Commission. And if we accept that any member of the Charter Revision, any member of the public can do it, why, why would we not do it is, is, is the issue. So just again, respectfully, I think it's coming back to your board.
Yep, so I, I just want to highlight a couple of things, and I, I don't want to cut Kevin or anybody else off, but.
I mean, my, my one concern was, if you don't mind me going.
No, go ahead.
Is, I don't know, have you seen any of the Charter Revision, have you watched any of us on there?
Yes, today was the first day I, I, I wanted to prepare for this meeting, so I, I watched the last meeting. But I did, I specifically, to answer your question, Curtis, I haven't gone, I haven't attended, and except for twenty minutes today, out of necessity, I specifically wasn't watching or being at all involved because I didn't want to, I'm gonna have an opportunity to go, hopefully at some point, and, and make some comments, and I, I didn't necessarily want to have any preconceptions. So I've tried to stay very far away from the process. This was the only letter I've sent, it was the only suggestion I made. It, it, it was the only thing that I did relative to Charter Revision. I sought help from others, and, you know.
So the only reason I ask that question is because I think the ones that I, that I, when I went and the ones that I've seen, everyone is saying we need to, to have a clear delineation between policy and action. So we have a chief executive office, and, and your role, it's, it's, this is one of those things where it's kind of stepping into policy. Yeah, so like, I, I would advise you to watch those because everyone who's gone and flies said that we needed a clear delineation, and this kind of.
Yeah, this, this shows that, and, and I will say, I think you're right. And, but, but to your point, Curtis, the fact that so many people have said that is proof positive, I think that that's exactly the case. And so please don't hold it against me when, when the majority of people have commented that there is a, a murkiness, that there is a need for clarity. We're all in agreement on that. So if we're in agreement on that, you know, hopefully I wouldn't be, you know, hung, drawn and quartered for, for stepping over here again, in the unique situation where the policy decision is still yours. It's just a recommendation. So what I'm hearing is, is that don't make any recommendations until we approve it. And, and I, I, I fundamentally would have a little objection to that.
I don't know about that.
So I, I'm gonna, oh, do you want to go? Do you want to talk?
Well, I do have something. I mean, I agree with much of what has been said by Curtis and Stephen, and, you know, I don't think, I'm not opposed to the, the concept of it all, but I think it's a stretch from the goals that we set and the policy that we set. And, you know, I think there's an issue sometimes with flow of information from what's going on in Town Hall to us. And, you know, at the end of the day, our, we have town employees who are being paid by our residents, and if they're being tasked with their man-hours to do things that we have not even been briefed on, that to me is a concern. So, and, and this is an example of it. So, you know, again, in concept, like, I'd like to hear more about this, I'm happy to discuss it further, but I just think there is a lot of nuances and things to it, you know, in terms of how this would function exactly, what they exactly would be tasked with. I struggle to believe that there would not be any financial allocation or needs of this commission. So that, those are my sort of comments on it.
Thank you. Kevin, did you want to say anything or no?
So I, I am gonna agree with Mark that he and town staff should feel comfortable speaking honestly with the Charter Revision Commission. And I would hope that whether in individual discussions or in public meetings, that they could do the same. In this case, there's a difference, I think, between giving an honest opinion on a challenge or an issue and forming what appears to be a collective action to advocate for a position that in this board's previous discussions on budget, we had discussed some challenges with prioritizing specifically the arts as a solution to economic development. It came up in this discussion. And I had to refresh my memory on the calendar, and I may get it wrong, but I feel like this letter was drafted and sent after that discussion. So that also gives me concern. Mark, I know you advocate for the arts. I had the privilege of participating in arts-based programs in primary and secondary school through university. A very enriching experience for me to create a whole person. And it's one of the greatest assets that we have here as a community. Things like the Performing Arts Center and all the other places where we can, you know, be, be a human for a moment, as opposed to just a cog in a wheel. So I, I love that about the community. One of the challenges, though, too, when we form a board or a commission of the government, not a outside group that wants to do something good, but form a commission of the government is to coordinate an issue or to fill a gap or a need. Bluntly, there is a lot of arts activity here in the town. So it doesn't feel like we're filling a gap or a need, there's, there's a lot. There probably could be something to be said for coordinating that activity, and I'm not smart enough to say that I have the solution for that. But if we do have a Culture, Parks and Rec, and there could be more done there, I, I see that Dave Bush's signature is on here, and I appreciate everything that he's done for Culture, Parks and Recs. But I'd, I'd be really fascinated to know why they don't have capacity to discuss some of those coordinating activities if it, if it fits neatly, you know, in there. That's, I think, a gap. So when we've jumped ahead from where I sit to advocating, again, as a, as a, as a group for this, because it's not just Mark Nelson's letter. And Diana, you're, you're an elected selectman, you don't need permission from many of us. Maybe Wendy wants to talk to you about it first, but that's, that's a party issue, not, not, not a board member issue. And I'll try to do the same and always speak openly and honestly, but there's, there's a lot more than, than just a good idea here when it has multiple signatures. It, it carries, you know, some weight. And it provides some embarrassment, you know, for this board as though that there's not coordination there. And I'm gonna guess, because I think that this is true, that there's no intent to embarrass or jump out ahead or any of that, and certainly not on Diana's part, and I'm sure not in, in Mark's part. But it is something that we're gonna have to work on together as a group here and in partnership with Mark. We hire competent management because we want to get competent management's advice. But, but it's a, a challenging rope to walk, to operate within the confines of what the public body sets as priorities. And I'll just be a little bit flippant and say that I hope that this commission doesn't do for the arts what our Economic Development Commission does for economic development. This is a real challenge, and I'm not convinced on the direct line that will benefit economic development in the arts. There is enrichment that adds to the vibrancy of a community. But I don't know that I can say that it sells more sandwiches or brings more people to Weldon's or whatever else. And so that's just a challenge for, for me, to draw that clear line. So that's all. Thanks for being honest and writing the letter and signing your name to something that you're passionate about. I'd love to talk about this more, maybe after Charter is done, and I don't think that it fits within the scope of what the Charter Commission's been charged to do.
Thank you. So I'm just gonna sum up my thoughts. I appreciate the honesty of everybody here. I, I do, you know, I did find out about it later, and I, I, I've, I've expressed this, that I thought it was kind of insulting that we didn't know about it at all. This effort, the whole board did not know, and we've all have touchpoints across people that are on this. I do want to say that no one's shutting anybody down from speaking to the Charter Revision Commission. We were the ones who commissioned and impaneled the Charter Revision Commission and asked to give the scope of what they should look like. And the scope was kind of eliminate dormant boards and commissions, review boards and commissions. And some of it was the hope that some of the boards and commissions would be taking, taken out of the Charter because you can't make changes to boards and commissions when they're embedded in the Charter. Example being the EDC, if you embed this in the Charter, you can't get it out of the Charter if it doesn't work. So, so that was that. The other point that I looked at was regardless of the Charter, so, so that was the one point. And we did ask the Charter Revision to reach out to town staff and things like that, but my intent was it's around these big issue parameters that we want them to clean up and fix, not adding new context to what the town is doing as a whole. Specifically without the Board of Selectmen, who per Charter today is responsible for establishing boards and commissions. So that is, that is our purview to establish a board or commission. So the one thing that I will say is, I'm happy to take this letter as consideration and input to our board if this is something we want to pursue. if this is something we wanna pursue going forward as a arts council, which Kevin, you were correct in that at our budget meeting on the twenty-fourth, when we were talking about giving funding to Simsbury Summer Theater, I threw out, let's start an arts council and everybody thought that was, you weighed, everybody kind of weighed in and Mark weighed in. And so I thought that was the first time that it was brought up, even though I think we'd all thought about it, that that would be something we might wanna pursue later as a board. And then yes, the letter came out after that. So, so what I'm saying here is, and I do think there's budget implications to this. I don't think it's as simple as that, so, so my recommendation is that, I know the Charter Revision Commission has asked you guys to come speak on this letter, but they had asked me to share this with our board and I thought the best way to do that transparently was to put it on our agenda. So if anybody in the Charter Revision Commission wants to watch this, they're welcome to hear what we said. But just so that they know where we stand on it, if that meeting is still going to happen. But, but the path that I would take with this is that it comes, if this is something we wanna take up, it comes through us and we can look at these considerations. But, you know, the number of people, where they come from, things like that should be part of the Board of Selectmen's policy to determine and how this board, this commission would get off the ground.
May I ask, was this, like, was there a meeting held with minutes and things to discuss and come together with this group?
No, it was just conceptual, there wasn't, wasn't a long debate or consider, you know, long consideration even. I think when I watched the Charter Revision Commission audit, I think to, to a man and woman, they said, we need more information, you know, we, we need this fleshed out. It's really just in the concept state. I'll, I'll share publicly what Wendy and I spoke about privately and that is, is that the concept wasn't ready for prime time. If, if, it would never get to the charter unless the Charter Revision Commission agreed to recommend it. So my thinking, which I understand now is different from some of yours, is that the first step is the Charter Revision Commission to recommend it. And then there would have been ample opportunity to, to get it in front of this board along with everything else that was recommended that, that you're gonna like or you're not gonna like. So the answer is that it's, it, it, it really isn't that well fine tuned. To Diana's point, the question of whether that student representative was full or ex physio had never been discussed. The issue about is there funding? I think the assumption was no, there's no funding, but yet what I'm hearing tonight is, is that this board believes that there would have to be funding. My response to that is the whole point is that it would be grant funded entirely. And in my opinion, I can't speak for the six, because of the five, because we didn't discuss it, but I can assure this board that this was born out of the budget constraints, born out of the need to raise significant grant money and that at no time did I envision asking for any funding for this. And, and I concur, having watched some of the Culture Parks and Rec committee meetings, I didn't think that, with all respect to them, there was much going on in, in, you know, vis a vis arts. And I think I agree with everything I've heard tonight, except one of the comments that Selectman Beal made. I think there are ample studies that show a direct ROI for, and I'm happy to share them, between a dollar invested in the arts and X returned in the form of local economic development. When people come to the Performing Arts Center, maybe ninety percent of them get in the car and leave town, maybe that's what I've heard. But the ten percent that don't, ten percent more than we're spending money in our local shops. So I believe there's a connection that can be made and I believe there's academic literature and studies around the country that support the great value that is, that derives to economic development from the arts. And I would just in my own defense ask that if economic development is our goal, our shared goal, we both have those goals. I'm looking for ways to achieve and be successful along with you. And I think it's a great idea, I hope it earns your support at the appropriate time, but it doesn't get into the charter unless they recommend it first, so.
Can I just answer your point also Heather, is I will be very clear that I had no meetings with any other, other signatures on here other than a discussion with Dave Bush. And that I'm being transparent on that and did not know the discussions were had with these other and did not know they were on this letter until I saw it. So, just letting you know that no, there was no meetings, minutes. And I didn't have a discussion with the Culture Parks and Rec's entire commission, it was just a conversation with Dave that I had just to see what his thoughts were and, and simply that. But other than that, I had no discussion with anybody else.
A very preliminary idea.
I mean, it's not a preliminary idea. If there's six signatures on here, Mark. I mean, this is an official letter on town manager letterhead, this isn't preliminary. This is a proposal to an official commission.
We, we have a long way to go before we get there, we've, we've gotta provide all kinds of background. What exactly would it do, you know, half of the questions that you asked tonight Kevin. So to me, it, it was preliminary. Again, I have some experience in, in, in this, so maybe, maybe I can share that with you at the appropriate time. But again, it was just a concept.
I am shocked to hear that a signature on this letter did not know that other people were signing it.
Yeah, and that's my bet.
It's, I, I don't put that on you. There's only, I, I, I think we've.
Talked.
Exhausted it, yeah.
Yeah, so, so.
I do think though, back to Wendy's point, that once you put something in the charter, and then something in concept that we don't have full details around as to whether it will be successful or.
Yeah.
There's, there's that sort of issue of that, putting that, something in the charter that is, if, if it is only just concept.
So we're gonna end with, if, if this is something that we wanna take up in a future agenda as a board of selectmen, I think we can do it that way.
The board discussing support for the arts at a future meeting.
Yep, okay, but not through the charter. I was gonna say, let me think about the charter shoot. Oh, I do wanna say, I appreciate the creativity that went into that, but I have to say that I think the creativity, if, if you're thinking of great policy ideas or things, those should be shared with us as a board, because that's our job, that's why we're here. We don't want them done around us, we want them done with us. That's how I feel and I'd be happy to, you know, have discussions on how to shape this. We all know Simsbury, we know things that'll work and not work in Simsbury and we could add a lot of value if we decide to take something up like this. So that's, that's where I'm gonna end it, I'm gonna move on. Okay, we have another good fun item here. So this item is the appointing a regular member to the Board of Ethics. Now, there's no attachments here, there's no information here. In, in the January thirteenth meeting that we had, there was a communications item that had come through Personnel from Tom Fitzgerald describing a process for unaffiliated voters. We did not vote on it, it came to the board, we didn't really have a lot of comment on it. We discussed the process, we had asked that the process be posted online so anybody who was an unaffiliated voter would see the process and everybody could understand the steps to the process. That said, since this has gone out, the way this is coming across, no one has any, in the public, I mean, we've gotten pushback in public, I've gotten calls on this asking why the town manager is appointing members to the Board of Ethics. Now, you're not appointing them, you're recommending them, because we are the appointing body, so we have to vote on it, which is the appointment. But I think what we wanna do here is revisit that process to make sure that we're, we're not giving away some of our, I guess, our board power. And Mark, you had offered to interview the unaffiliated voters as a way to take the effort and to speed the process up from Personnel Subcommittee, because we, you know, we interview members for certain boards and commissions. Some just come from the parties and we just appoint them here and it's always a bit confusing as to who's doing what. But it sounds like the public, you know, wants elected official input on the appointments or selections of boards and commissions, so I'm putting that out there. I did ask to have it on the Personnel Subcommittee meeting, which is Thursday, to revisit the process at that level. But if people, because I, I think we need to revisit whether we need some sort of rubric, need to see all the people that applied and why the person that was chosen is chosen and we can agree or disagree, I, I don't really know the answer to that. But I would like to take a, some feedback from this board back to Personnel if we're gonna revisit it, which will still come back here, but just wanted to get some input from people.
So if I could expand on it for clarification.
Sure.
I'm on Personnel, just full disclosure. What the onus of our effort was initially, when we were in the concept phase, was a pathway for unaffiliated voters to be considered for boards and commissions. Prior to the discussions that took place earlier this year, as an unaffiliated voter, if you wanted to get on a board or a commission, you had to go to the Republican Town Committee or the Democratic Town Committee and for their own rightful preferences, they would choose someone of their party first, which was an additional hurdle for unaffiliated. It was at those meetings that we started to conceptualize a pathway for the unaffiliated voters, which ironically, the person that was recommended is unaffiliated. In this pathway, what we discussed, just broader terms for, is it okay if I discuss? Conceptual, alright, you would volunteer on the town website. From there would be channeled, unaffiliated would go through the town manager's office, Democrat would obviously go through Democratic Town Office and Republican vice versa. The system will work when it's fully in place. I think the system's not in place and nobody even understands where we were coming from and that's the, the, excuse the term, but paranoia, that something was.
Yeah, a mess.
You know, going on behind the scenes. But I think that's where we got, that being said, we did finalize the policy or the concept and I think it's great that you put it on the agenda, I look forward to discussing it. I don't know who the two other people, I think there were three applicants.
Actually, one didn't get back to us Steve, so there, there were two that I interviewed. But I interviewed you both, two.
Okay, and, you know, I, I, I respect that things go through subcommittees before it gets here and this is just the pathway, we don't question the Democratic Town Committee, nor do we question the Republican Town Committee. I think for this to work altruistically, you have to trust, although I hate trusting the system, you have to sort of trust the process on this one.
So the applications all go through town clerk and then disseminated unaffiliates to town manager and then the respective parties as they are registered.
And I think that's how this proceeded, is it not?
Exactly right.
So there was no Republican or Democratic?
No, this was a U position.
Yeah. So it has to be repopulated.
Some, some boards and commissions, it could, in places there, that you could be an RU or a D, there's an opening and that's where that gets really kind of gray. But this was a specifically a U opening, which wouldn't have gone to either party and had to come through a, a different channel. So what the right channel is, you know, I guess we have to figure out what we're most comfortable with and what the people feel. But Steve is right, that was the initial plan, but there was no clarification. No one, this just says the town manager point picked to a person and it was not clear and people probably did not read the communications because we didn't vote on it. And if that makes it more, more, brings it up to a level that people recognize it and we all have our vote on it, then it's a different story than just it came through communications. So if you have input, we're gonna bring it up on Personnel, Personnel to revisit it and see if we can, you know, make it something that works.
Yeah, I, I do have input, just a couple seconds on it. So historically, previously as well, the town clerk's office was able to forward applicants who were unaffiliated to both town committee nominating committees as well. And I had mentioned previously to others, one of the reasons for that is some people are unaffiliated when they're checking the box for all sorts of reasons and then they may decide to affiliate if it's related to an appointment. And in this case, it needed to have an unaffiliated person, which is perfect. An unaffiliated person for an unaffiliated seat could still be nominated by one of the parties and that's fine as well. You don't have to actually be affiliated by the party to get endorsed or nominated by them. But I do think having an unaffiliated process is good. What can't happen, in my opinion, is that one singular person, with all respect to Mark, make a, make a nomination and do the reviews. Each one of the town committees and their processes are elected by a body of voters and they appoint a nominating committee with, with duly approved bylaws. Those recommended or volunteer people are reviewed, you know, by a nominating committee, voted on by a town committee that's then forwarded, you know, here. So those steps sometimes can be onerous. But that gives this group, which has the appointing authority, I hope, more confidence in that process and then sometimes, as has come up during this tenure, we need a moment to review. Let's just take a moment here, even though we got a duly nominated person here, to make sure we understand the circumstance and I think that that's fine, that's the process. In this case, I think we're gonna table this nomination in this, this motion, which I think is appropriate at this point, and then make sure that we follow the process and we don't have an opportunity where there's any question about the propriety or the process or anything and it can't just be through one person. So if it stays in Personnel Sub for now, I think that's appropriate. You get an opportunity to review and I look forward to the recommendation.
Okay.
Question for clarification, when it goes through Personnel Sub, I wanna make sure that, because if there were two applicants, then both of them should go to Personnel Subcommittee.
We, so it, there's only certain boards and commissions, this is something that I think should be brought up by the charter to clarify which boards and commissions go, I mean, I, we always have to ask Tom, which boards and commissions do we interview, which boards and commissions come through the parties and we just rubber stamp, right?
Right.
It is a little confusing.
But for this one in particular, like this specific case, for example, since it wasn't unaffiliated.
We would have interviewed the person when we have a sheet that gives like criteria and questions, including what is your favorite M and M color?
Nice, but you would have interviewed both candidates, any candidate.
Yeah, but so I'm sure Mark did inter, I mean, there must have been a deadline to get the applications in and then, no?
Open till filled, we have twenty-three applications since December sixteenth.
So open till filled is kind of tricky because there should be, there should be kind of a cutoff, so that's something maybe we wanna talk, you don't think they should be?
I don't.
Oh, oh, okay, okay.
But that, that's something that also should be outlined and processed.
Yeah, maybe if it's.
I don't know that there's a real cutoff for these kinds of appointments, because it's a vacancy.
That's true. Anyway, it's, we're gonna discuss it on Thursday, it gives us something to, to talk about as a group. And so I'm asking, do I need a motion to table this?
You have to motion and then we'll motion to table.
Okay.
So somebody has to put the motion out.
Okay, thank you.
For it to be tabled.
Okay, I'm gonna move, I have to say it then, move if, what if you don't table it and you just pass it? I'll ask for a motion effective March tenth twenty-five to appoint Renee Blanchett as a regular member of the Board of Ethics until January first twenty twenty-nine.
I make a motion to table that.
Second the table.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, it's tabled, see, I made it official, okay. So now we have all the minutes, I have this, how to tell you? The, the minutes from the budget meeting were too hard to follow. So I'm just gonna ask for a motion effective today to approve the minutes of the February twentieth special meeting.
I'll move to approve of the minutes.
Do we make corrections first or?
Well, you do it in discussion, as I've been taught over the, the term.
Second.
Um, is there any discussion on the February twentieth meeting minutes?
Sorry, I'm still scrolling.
On page twenty-nine. I'll call a question.
Didn't I call? I'm waiting, I'm waiting for discussion.
He's, he's trying to find it.
So, on the, on page one of the February twenty-fourth.
I'm not there yet, the twentieth.
We're only on the twentieth.
Yeah, but I'm on the twenty-fourth.
So then approve, then let's vote to all those in favor of the February twentieth meeting minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
I'll move to approve the meeting minutes of February twenty-fourth twenty twenty-five.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Yes.
The first line should be special meeting of the Board of Selectmen, shouldn't it?
Directors, correct.
Yeah, you're right, oh, wow.
It's like legit, I'm done, I need a mic to drop.
So in the comments by the Honorable Joan Coe, it says the AARP funding and I think that she was talking about the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act.
Good catch.
Good.
Good catch Kevin. I found a typo on, um, page three of the minutes. Mr. Nelson noted that they are transitioning some responsibilities, I took out the R. My grammar, I've been doing brief papers, so.
It's correct though.
Only for clarity, on.
Your version.
Sorry, on page four, on letter E in the Board of Selectmen, the outside agency under SCTV, I just would like to say that we reduced the town manager's proposed to twelve, five hundred says to leave it at.
Oh, yeah.
So it's, we, we did reduce it, which I, I'm appreciative of. So, it's, we, we did reduce it, which I, I'm appreciative of.
Okay, I have another typo on, on page four in the second paragraph. It's not the first selectman, it's the first selectman stipend.
Depends on the time of day, I guess.
The frist.
All right, I have a typo. The bottom line of page four, it says STIFY.
Oh, yeah.
That's an abbreviation.
That is, yeah.
It's actually S S T F Y.
It actually, it's not and it's just S S T. It's just S S T.
He said STIFY though, that's what she said.
Yeah, he said STIFY, S S T.
I like that though, STIFY. That's pretty good. Is there any other corrections? So, all those in favor of approving the minutes for those corrections, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, I'd like to.
Move to adjourn.
Yeah, thanks. So, second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, wow, 7:30, early.
So, calm.
Thank you.
For over 40 years, SCM has been the voice of our town.
Bringing us together through local programming.
Education.
And live broadcasts.
SCM isn't just about television.
It's about empowering our community.
Ensuring our voices are heard during government meetings.
And celebrating milestones.
Like our high school graduations.
But today, SCM faces a challenge.
Our funding structure is based on television subscriptions.
It's no secret, people have been cutting the cord.
With a shift to internet-only subscriptions.
SCM receives less revenue.
Even though all our programming is freely available online.
We need your support.
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 Your donation can make a difference.
It will ensure that SCM remains open.
Continues to educate our youth.
And keeps our community informed.
Thanks to SCM, I've been honing my creative skills, helping me work towards my college[1771.51]